I'd like to call the March 23 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording the meeting. Seeing none, could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is public comment, and we have Mark Benal.
Yeah, Mark Benal, Warfield Street, Town Meeting Member. When you send out the warrant and the budget, it would be possible to take the tapes and put it onto a CD. The town's kind of gone green, and it'd be just a lot easier for everybody. I don't know if all Town Meeting Members will like that way, but it'd just be easier, I think.
Okay.
Any questions?
So, so send it out on a CD format rather than-
Cardboard, yeah, to a CD.
Okay, do we know the regulations for that notification? We'll have to look at the Mass General law for notification, but thank you, Mark, for that.
I mean, you can do it either way, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Okay, Bill?
Elbow, elbow, Bill.
And next, we have Kenethia.
Good evening, my name is Kenethia, I live at 404 Leicester Street. Thursday of last week, my wife Ellen, Sarah Bedeckson, myself went to the annual meeting for the Blackstone Heritage Corrida. We were given the VIP treatment, had a table reserved just for us and some of the hierarchy of the Blackstone from all over the country. Auburn was welcomed from the podium. We got a very, very warm welcome. I brought some of the papers that they gave to us. Can I-
Absolutely, you can give them to Sharon, and she'll pass them along.
And one other thing, Ranger Chuck Arning, the Lead Ranger, called me three or four weeks ago, and, well, I don't know if everybody knows about this, but the Park Service does what they call a Ranger Walkabout. All summer long, every Thursday night, they, I've been to several of them in Worcester, I've been to some in Sutton, but now that we're on the corridor, they wanted to have what's called a Ranger Walkabout done in Auburn. And Chuck and I talked it over, and he asked me if I would actually do it, and they would accompany me. It's probably a round trip, a one-mile walk. We're going to start at Worcester's Hebrew Cemetery, which is actually located in Auburn. I'll give a brief history of that. We'll walk within sight of the railroad tracks, which is CSX today, but I'll give a history of the 1839 was the Western Railroad, I'll tell a little bit about that. Then we'll go to the abandoned steam stone crusher that you can still pretty much make out, it went out of business in 1927, I'll tell about that. And there's also a hobo jungle where, during the Depression, people from all over the country would have gone in there and stayed for a short time, they had what they called Mulligan Stew, where everybody would throw whatever they had in there. And they actually took nickels, Indian had nickels, and they did art work with a hammer and a punch, some are very valuable today. They would take those nickels and go to area houses to barter for meals. They were so sophisticated that they actually had an insignia that would tell you whether this house would welcome you with a hot meal, if you would listen to a lady give some religion to you, or if this house may welcome you with a shotgun. They were very sophisticated. It's pretty, I think it will be of interest to everybody, it's June 25th, and I'll have more, when it gets closer, I'll maybe have something at the library or something telling about it. That's about the end of the story, I guess.
Great, have you set a date?
Yes, June 25th.
June 25th.
It's in the evening. It's probably, probably an hour and a half walk, and it's, like I say, it's probably round trip, one mile, and anybody that's planning on attending, I would recommend that they wear closed shoes, because it's, there could be some poison ivy in there, I'm not really sure.
Okay, but kind of a save the date for June 25th in the early evening?
I think it's seven o'clock, if I remember right.
Seven p.m., great.
But when it gets closer, I'll send something up to the-
So we'll have more information to follow, but save the date for June 25th for the walk.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thanks for your passion for that issue. And we have Mr. Bob Plutukas.
Good evening, Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I've been getting several letters and envelopes in the last few days related to town meeting, and I hope that at some point tonight, they're all clarified. I don't know what happened, I thought we were having one town meeting, it appears we're now having two. And then another one came from the school committee, and something about clarifying articles, but it almost appears like they're going to clarify them after we vote on them, but I'm not sure on that. That's this letter. So if you could just put this all in perspective for me, so I know exactly what's going to be expected of me as a town meeting member, because these are not as clear as they need to be. I'd like to also know what happened. I thought we were going to have one meeting.
Yeah.
And not hearsay, or part of an article in a newspaper, or something like that, but actually what happened. Thank you very much.
So we don't oversee town meetings, so it, you know, would have been helpful to either, you know, ask to have the moderator here, or the town clerk, because we, I can only speak for myself, but I'm not familiar with the letters that you're referencing, because we don't receive them. We're not town meeting members, but I can have the town manager-
Okay.
-give you the information that she has.
Thank you, through the chair, you're correct, the town meeting is the moderator and the town clerk, but I am aware of what happened. There was a town meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, March 24th, to take up 11 articles, and due to an error in, on a copy machine in the clerk's office, some of the packets that went out were missing one of the pages that had Articles 5 through 8 on it. Not all of the packets, some of them. The packets were run in batches on the, on the copy machine, so some of the batches apparently were fine, and a couple of them were not. So random sampling of just a couple of town meeting members from the clerk's office determined that some of them, some of the batches had gone out, I believe they were done in batches of 25, that some of them, not knowing how many, were missing that one page. So a long discussion took place with the town moderator, the assistant town clerk, and town council, as to what would be the options available to the town for going forward, knowing that there were some town meeting members that wouldn't have had all of the articles. So it was determined by town council and the town moderator that reasonable notice had not been given to all of the town meeting members by virtue of the fact that not all of them received a complete packet. Therefore, the, the articles that were on the missing sheet, which are Articles, I believe, 5 through 8, could not be addressed or taken up on the 24th, tomorrow evening, because reasonable notice had not been given. Under our charter, that notice is 14 days, the clerk's office needs to mail it out for a special town meeting 14 days before the meeting. For an annual meeting, it's seven days before. So there was, the package had already gone, the first call came in probably three days after the package had been mailed out. So town moderator and town council looked at all the options, and it was determined that we would not be able to just have, just postpone the meeting on the 24th and move a meeting on the 1st. The decision would have had to been made on, within an hour or two of that meeting, which would have meant calling a quorum together of the Board of Selectmen and having them start the process all over again and taking a vote. Not knowing if we could get a quorum in the next, you know, to get it advertised, we had one hour to do it. We did not, we don't have the time to put it off past that date in April, because the articles that are coming before town meeting at this time are articles from the school department that are time-sensitive. Those are articles related to the funding for the middle school, and under, once they receive their approvals from the MSBA in Boston, they're given 90 days to get the approval for the authorization for the spending. So the 90-day clock started ticking on January 15th, there was plenty of time for the March 23rd meeting, but not to start the whole process over with the two-week notification, the eight-day wait for the certification. So the town clerk and the town moderator decided that the, and town council decided the best way was to hold the meeting on the 24th, it's already been announced. All the constables had delivered all of the packages, all of the packages, two to each of the five precincts were complete packets, they were done on a different system. So we could still take up all of the articles that were in the mailing that wasn't tainted, and then adjourn, and meet again on April 1st to take up the remaining four articles, which happened to be all of the school articles, and those are the ones that are time-sensitive.
You see, the other letter came talking about, "Thank you for that clarification." Sounds messy, and I probably did the best thing that the town could have done. How do we prevent this from happening again, so the town meeting members don't have to put two nights aside instead of one?
You know, through the chair, I don't want to speak for the clerk's office.
Okay, so this all happened in the clerk's-
It was an error with the copy machine in the clerk's office, I would tell you that errors happen on, on machines.
I understand that.
Things like that happen, 150 copies were made, you know, short of checking all 150 copies before they go out, I don't think you can prevent it, and maybe that's what has to happen moving forward. Again, this is under the charter, it's under the clerk's office, so I don't want to speak to how they're going to change their systems or adapt their systems to prevent it in the future.
Okay, so it actually happened here, it didn't go to a printer or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that, I'm glad you clarified that, because that's somehow, that's what I was hearing, that it had gone to a printer.
Through the chair, the draft bylaw document, that was 109 to somewhere pages, that did go to a printer.
Oh, okay.
Because our machines just can't possibly turn out that kind of document any time that we needed it. So that went to a printer, but the warrant itself was printed in the clerk's office.
And this, obviously, the other letter that I received was from the Superintendent of Schools, and it almost appears like they're going to clarify articles after we vote on them, but I'll have to check with her on that.
Yeah, you can check with the superintendent.
Yeah, right.
I'm sure she's available tomorrow during the day.
You can see where some of this confusion is coming from, and all the different mailings that have come out to town meeting members, I'm sure there are others that have questions too. And I hope that this helped to clarify it for anyone listening at home. It helped me, thank you very much.
So there's going to be a small amount of the articles actually considered tomorrow?
Through the chair, Articles 1 through 4 and 9 through 11 will be considered tomorrow. Articles 5 through 8, that were on the backside, it's my understanding when, and again, I don't want to speak for the clerk's office, but my understanding is, when the papers went through the machine on some of the batches, the machine grabbed two papers at once, so what should have been Page 2 stuck to Page 2, and it became Page 3. And they would double side. So, anything on Page 2?
I can't, I can't believe we're using that technology in 2015, and not laser printers, whatever.
Through the chair, so we have to postpone the articles that were not given fair warning. That was the best advice by town council, and the town moderator makes the final decision, and he was 100% in concurrence.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no additional public comment. We have communication, we have a letter from the Zoning Board of Appeals on a comprehensive review of the Auburn zoning bylaws. It's a lengthy letter, so I won't read it, but it's a request from the Zoning Board of Appeals after seeing the undertaking of the, of the current review of the administrative and other bylaws. They are asking that the, the Board of Selectmen ask the town manager to appoint a committee to review the zoning bylaws. Mr. Holstrom.
Excuse me, through the chair, Julie, has anybody from the zoning board approached you? We haven't had any discussion with you on this matter yet.
Through the chair, not one-on-one, I am receipt of the letter as well, and Matt Benoit, our town clerk, let me know that this was, was coming and had been sent to the board.
Okay, just as a follow-up, it says, although as recently as 2012, the signed bylaws were updated in the Business Industrial Districts, generally regarded as difficult to interpret by applicants and board members alike. So evidently, they've had some review of some of the things as they go along, but it sounds like it's going to be another yeoman's project in order to get the zoning bylaws reviewed and updated also. So I didn't know if they had approached you with anything other than the letter.
Not at this time, but again, this was sent to both me and the Board of Selectmen, so I'm assuming that they, you know, wanted to make sure we had public dialogue about it.
Right.
I would, I would agree with you, it will be a similar process to what we've gone through with the bylaw review process, which has been three years. Many of the zoning bylaws probably have not been reviewed in many years. When we took on the project of the bylaws, the general bylaws, it was the will of the board for us to look at the general bylaws, and then down the road to look at the zoning bylaws. So that would be the logical next step. I think we still need to get through the zone, the general bylaws first, and make sure that we get that underway, and then it would be a similar process to the bylaw review committee process that we have in place now. Except I would say, when you amend zoning bylaws, the process under Mass General Law is a little bit different, they may be a little bit different than it is under the zoning bylaws, but primarily the same.
So do members wish, go ahead.
One other thing, I, I would agree that, you know, it'd be, probably a great idea to review the zoning bylaws. From the town bylaws that we have now with the review and reading through the document, which is quite detailed and comprehensive, I think that's going to make the town government move a lot more smoothly, and I think that if they have the Auburn bylaws for, the zoning bylaws haven't been reviewed, and gone through and updated, I think that would help us out immensely with some of the questions that have come up in the past, and we can incorporate them, and so I would, I would agree that that would go, but probably not at this point until we get the other bylaws completed.
Mr. Smalley?
I, I just have a question through the chair to the town manager. I, I didn't hear the, your reason for wanting to wait until the, until the current review is done.
Yep, the current review should be done, well, tomorrow night, it goes to town meeting. From there, it goes to the Attorney General's Office. If the Attorney General has any additional changes to anything, they would send it back to us for further review. Then there was a 90-day waiting period, apparently for the AG's office to review, and up to a 90-day waiting period until they go into effect. I think at this point, we have, we would have to have another committee. I don't know if the current bylaw review committee wants to stay on to take on the zoning review, so we would have to put together a new committee, it wouldn't be the same committee.
Well, that's, so that's what I'm wondering, since you already have people here who are willing to volunteer, if we could, if we could start that administrative process, so that we have a committee ready to go when the general bylaw review is completed and runs through, runs through the course of its process, maybe if we started taking care of some of the administrative part of putting together a committee now, we could lessen that time lag between when the first set is complete and this review is complete, and I think it would just expedite it. And I, I still don't think that you'd have this ongoing until the other one is done, but at least that administrative phase might be completed.
I mean, if the board would like to start to take on this process, we can certainly do that, we can advertise for a committee. I, I know we would have to have members, well, we should have members of the planning board, so this would also have to be run by the planning board. When you do a zoning bylaw review, they have to be involved too. So there are other departments that we would have to confer with, but there's no reason we couldn't start to put the committee together. I think at this point, as far as getting deep into the process, we need to get through the bylaw review, as far as town council right now is handling right now all the legal aspects of the bylaws that we're working on, the general bylaws, and I just don't know from the matter of time if we can take on both at once.
Well, just in fact, we've had, you know, seen what we've had with other committees, and the time it takes for people to volunteer, or to get people in place, or sometimes people volunteer, then for some reason they have to drop out, if, if we could at least have one, you know, I mean, that's just me, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board. I, I just think maybe we could shorten that timeframe, but whatever, the board.
Mr. Carpenter, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I've been pushing for a review for some time of that, and I think it is long overdue. Obviously, I would like to give the committee that's sitting an opportunity to express whether they would like to serve before we advertise and say, "We, we need volunteers." And, you know, we, we would need Board of Health, we'd need, you know, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation Commission, Town Meeting, general residents, people, you know, a wide, wide group with a lot of experience, and I know we have many of them in town, but where we have a sitting committee, I'd at least like to give them the opportunity to say whether they'd like to continue before we advertise. But I do think we should be looking at what we need to do to move the process on.
So I think what I'm hearing from board members is, there's an agreement to move forward with requesting the town manager to form a committee to, you know, evaluate and hold a comprehensive review of the zoning bylaws, looking at the, requesting the current bylaw review committee to see if they are interested in serving, continuing their service to undertake a zoning review, as well as looking to add members as required by Mass General Law. Am I correct in that? Is there a motion to that?
Sure, motion as just read or spoken, to move the process forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, so the motion is to ask the town manager to pursue a comprehensive review of the zoning bylaws first, reaching out to the members of the current bylaw review committee to see if they are interested in serving on that committee, and also looking to add members as required by Mass General Law, or which would make sense in the lines of Planning Board members, Board of Health members, and residents. Got it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. And next, we have an email that came to myself as chairman and Chairman Bob Tatro of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it was also sent to Mr. Simonyan and Mr. Carpenter. Dear Bob and Doreen, please accept this email as official notice of my resignation as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective immediately. My 20 years of service to the town has been very rewarding, but it is time for me to spend more time with my family. I appreciate having had the opportunity to work with so many fine board members, town employees, and residents, and I will never forget my time as a member of the board. Please let me know if you need any assistance or questions on zoning matters. All the best, Nastia Toly. And I did respond back to Mr. Nastia Toly that, obviously thanking him for his 20 years of service, but also just for, as a formality that he needed to give written notification to the town clerk, and I have been advised that he has done that. So I don't know if board members want to make a motion to send a, a letter to Mr. Nastia Toly thanking him for his 20 years of service, or possibly invite him in, whichever board members wish to do.
I would highly like to send him a letter, but I'd also like to have him in for a, drawing a blank on-
Proclamation?
A citation, recognition, inviting, you know, current members, former members that he may have served with, just to make it an event. Second.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion to send Mr. Nastia Toly a letter thanking him for his 20 years of service, and also invite him into a future Board of Selectmen meeting to present him with a Board of Selectmen proclamation thanking him again for his 20 years of service. And there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, thank you. Next item, we have a Board of Selectmen items, and we have a one-day beer and wine license for the Knights of Columbus Monsignory Council at St. Joseph Parish Center at 68 Central Street for April 25th, 2015. In your packet, you have the application documents and comments from the DCG. Is there a member to speak on this?
Sure.
If you could come up to the podium and give your name for the record, and tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight.
My name is Joseph Butler, and I'm on here, I'm here on behalf of Monsignory Council of the Knights of Columbus at St. Joseph Church, and we do a Night of the Races scholarship and fundraiser for the last nine, well, this will be our ninth year. We've raised just about $50,000 in that timeframe to give to charities and scholarships for Auburn kids and charities throughout. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay. And are you familiar with the recommended conditions that the DCG has put on? I'll read them for the record. The applicant shall obtain all necessary permits and inspections from town departments, boards, or commissions. The applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals from state agencies, and the applicant shall provide the crowd manager's certification to the building department prior to the event-
Yes.
-start date? You're familiar with all that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I just have one thing, and I'm not sure if it's, if it's our office, or if we need to get another copy, just, you know, I'll vote to approve this, but there's a alcohol intervention methods certification for Joseph Vincent, and I just can't read the expiration date, so I want to make sure that we have-
Yeah, that's why I put the other guy on also.
Yeah.
I couldn't, when I, when I sent it, when I fasted over, for whatever reason, it didn't come with his date.
And even, that one's a little difficult to read, so just so if we can get a clean copy of those for the record, so we can see the, the expiration dates and the certifications.
Yep.
Great, thanks. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding this event? It's an annual event, what's, how many years?
This could be our ninth year.
Congratulations.
See how tired I am?
(laughing).
And I did my little drawing back for Steve, I did it from last year's drawing.
Yeah.
You liked it so much last year, I just kept it.
I enjoy the drawing.
I appreciate it.
I was just going to say, just because the event's at night doesn't mean you have to send us pictures of this.
(laughing). I don't know why it came all out, I don't know.
So just so we can, just so we can get some clean copies-
But both these guys are up to date, just so you guys know.
Yeah, well, we, we actually kind of need it, you know, a legal, a legal copy of it, so if you could provide the board with that, that would be great.
Yeah.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the event? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failed to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license. Second, for discussion?
Is there discussion?
Do you need Mr. Carpenter to include his motion, be what you stated about that?
Just to, to be sure that we have legible certifications for the alcohol service.
I will happily include that.
Great.
And I'll, second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Have a great event.
Thanks. Now, is there still a fee for this? Because usually they waive the fee.
I was just gonna ask.
You have to ask the board to do that.
Well, I would like to, then. Usually somebody brings it up, I don't ask.
We can't, we can't bring it up, you need to request it.
May I request it now?
Certainly.
Could you please request a $50 fee that usually comes along this, because it is charity work?
So you're waiving a request of the, of the application fee?
Please.
Okay.
And make a motion that we waive the application fee for this event. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you very much, guys.
Have a great event. Next item we have is a March 24th, 2015 special town meeting warrant. So the board would be voting to their recommendation on warrant articles, and the options are to recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petitioner, or take no position. Just as a reminder, we have not scheduled a board meeting prior to town meeting, because we were meeting tonight, so any action that we'll be taking on the articles will happen tonight, or not at all.
And which ones, ones that will not be discussed?
Page 2. Articles 5 through 8, but, but we would be taking a position on them, they'll just be voted on at a later date. So Article 1 is to hear the reports of the Finance Committee or other town offices and committees. Is there a second?
Would we really, motion to recommend approval? It's a standard.
I know, but, but you know what, someone could recommend that we don't want to hear the reports.
I think that's for the moderator to decide, but-
Is there a second?
Not for me, I think that's-
Second.
Is there further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll be, I'll abstain.
Do you have that, Sharon? Article 2, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $144,519.81 from free cash for fiscal year 2014. to appropriate $144,519.81 from free cash for fiscal year 2014, circuit breaker reimbursements to the Auburn School Department.
I'd make a motion that we support the article.
Recommend approval?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, so voted. Article Three, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds to support the Auburn Public Schools' participation in the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program to replace the roofs at 10 Swanson Road and the Bryn Mawr School, as well as a boiler replacement at 10 Swanson Road. Article Three of the May 5th, 2011 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $95,300 for Packard Jog, and then transfer $95,300 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School, and the roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. And I just want to remind members that these are the articles that the Superintendent came in to discuss with us. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Mr. Simonian.
In, in this, in this article, when we, when we repurpose CIP funds, don't we typically put in the article what the initial purpose was? I'm, I'm just curious, because what, what was this initially intended for, from the 2011 town meeting?
I can tell you, the original one was an item related to Packard Jog. I don't have that level of detail before me, but that, it could have been for equipment related to Packard Jog School. So that was, that would have been voted at the May 2011 town meeting. I would have to defer to the sponsor of the article, which is the school committee. I don't have that level of detail.
Okay. I, I'm not, I'm not going to support the article, not because I don't think that the, I'm, I realize the reason for the funding, but I don't want to see this become a, the, the rule, because every, every time, as far as I've ever seen as a town meeting member and since I've been on the Board here, we've always concluded both what it's being repurposed for and what the original purpose was, so that's the only reason why I won't support recommending the article for approval.
Mr. Holstrom?
Just in a comment to Steve's remarks, the account number is listed in here from that, so it was, instead of, the account number has been listed, so I don't know if we want to put in a complete summary of what it was. The account number is here, and so if there is any information needed, we go back to that 2011 Annual Town Meeting report. But otherwise, I think we're going to get into, you know, extra pages for summarizing what those accounts are.
Oh, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about, you know, articles and articles of, I, just, one line, just, it's, it usually says it was repurposed from this. That's all. Not a big deal. I just, you know, I don't want this to become the, the rule.
Mr. Carpenter?
Would that, would that be in the town report?
I'm sorry.
Would it be in the town report? I don't believe we print the CIP, the entire CIP, but there might be some detail in the town report that I've come across.
Well, as, if you recall, even the CIP plan that's presented to town meeting will list equipment, Packard Jog School. There is supporting detail behind that, that feeds that, but we'd have to actually go back to when the original CIP was approved to identify specifically what it is they were requesting.
And I believe that that information is in the presentation. We can pull that date up when the Superintendent came in, but that was in the presentation when the Superintendent came in.
Yeah, I can't recall what it is, but I do know that we were made aware of what it was.
Yeah. So is there any further discussion? The motion is to recommend approval. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
I don't know if you-
Mr. Plutukas.
Article 231, Milbury Street, through the Chair. I just want to make sure in my mind that I'm sure what I'm going to be voting on here. Is there any way that this adds to the school budget automatically? I'm in favor of the motion, but I'm, would not be in favor if this becomes part of their budget in the future. That's what I'll need to know, that, through you too, Mr. Kasonovich.
No, th, these monies have already been borrowed. They are sitting basically in an account, and they're being asked to be repurposed or amended for another purpose, another like purpose. That qualifies for the borrowing as well. So in no way does this add to the operational, operational side of the budget.
You understand my-
I do.
-my question there, because sometimes it does, and I wouldn't want this to be, I'm in favor of it. I just wouldn't want it to be added to their budget without coming and justifying why it was. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else on this?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Simonian, Chair. Yes, this article for, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP, CIP funds to support the Auburn Public Schools' participation in the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program to replace the roofs at 10 Swanson Road and the Bryn Mawr School, as well as a boiler replacement at 10 Swanson Road. Article Three of the May 7th, 2013 Town Meeting, Town Meeting as follows. Reduce the balance of $100,000 for Packard Jog, and then transfer $100,000 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School, and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I just, well, yeah, but also, I mean, I, I see that there's multiple articles for the same thing, and in each case, it's the same, it's, it's basically the same, and I just, obviously, would rather have asked the question of the Superintendent, but if there, if there, if there was no longer need for this, the original purpose for Packard Jog, or is there something that Packard Jog will go without, because this money's being repurposed, that will need to be taken care of down the road? Do we know that? And if not, that's fine. I, like I said, I would probably have been better off asking the question of the Superintendent, but she's not-
I, I don't want to speculate.
That's fine.
Yep.
All right, I appreciate it.
And through the Chair, if I may, we actually had a conversation with Town Council the other day. When the school committee or any of the committees submit a warrant article to us, they've already voted on it, so we cannot change the language in it.
Understood.
So I think, you know, moving forward, we could certainly let them know when they submit the articles to identify that. I don't think that's-
I mean, I, I don't disagree, and, and that's fine, and I'm not in any way shape or form questioning what the school committee voted on, but this is also something that routinely is brought up by town meeting members when CIP funds get trans, so I, I seriously doubt if any of the, any town meeting members are going to remember back to 2011, 2007, you know, what that specific thing was. I think it would just be informational for them, help everybody out, and it's, like I said, it's the way it's always been, so I don't want to beat a dead horse. That's just my thoughts on it.
So I'll support the article based on the presentation that the Superintendent gave to this Board, and I, I don't want to speak to the Superintendent, but I'm assuming she'll make a similar presentation at town meeting tomorrow night. So, is there additional comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Simonian.
Article Five, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP, CIP funds to support the Auburn Public Schools' participation in the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program to replace the roofs at 10 Swanson Road and the Bryn Mawr School, as well as a boiler replacement at 10 Swanson Road. Article Three of the May 7th, 2013 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Reduce the balance of $40,000 for central office, and then transfer $40,000 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School, and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, Mr. Cut, Mr. Holstrom?
Um, going through some of the, the, the 2014, 2015 budget, the annual town meeting, Articles 14, 15, 16, and 17, I'm just figuring it out here now. Let's see, some, twelve, two. So we've got almost $800,000 from those four articles that we are going to be taking from Mary D. and Julia Bancroft, and transferring to 10 Swanson Road. The way this article is written, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money, I don't know what the amount of money is, and I have a question on whether or not that would be added to the bottom line.
We're on five.
We're on five?
Sorry.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Nope.
I've got it written underneath Article Five.
Yeah, if that's, if that sum of money is for the next one, not to interrupt you.
I've seconded that.
Okay. So do you want to hold your comments for Article Six?
Yep.
Okay. So, again, the presentation was made from the Superintendent to the Board of Selectmen, as well as, if I recall correctly, the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee, that, again, I'm hoping that the Superintendent has that information as a part of her presentation tomorrow night, so I'll support the article. Is there additional comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Simonian.
Yes, Mr. Simonian.
Article Six, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the School Committee for the replacement of the roof at the Auburn Middle School and Bryn Mawr Schools, and a boiler at Auburn Middle School, which proposed repair project, projects would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town may be eligible for school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Buildings Authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 54.16% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, and, number two, a total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, or act on anything relative thereto. This may be an article that we wish to be, to hear from the school committee. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve it. They did present it. They've presented information about this program to us at least two or three times, so I, I personally feel that it makes sense that we invest in our school buildings, and it's nice to see that they are taking, you know, we built new the last two schools. They're, they're taking a school that has been in use for many years, and they're repurposing it and saving a fair amount of money.
Excuse me, Mr. Carpenter, just let me, is there a second on this for discussion?
Second, discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
I said it all.
Oh, did you? Should have had a discussion. Is there additional comment? Mr. Holstrom?
Back to the annual town meeting of 14, 15, 16, and 17, there was a total of $862,000 that we amended the CIP program from the 2010, 2011, 2012, and 2013 CIP program for the schools. Now, we're asking for appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the School Committee. It sounds like that could be added to their bottom line. I guess I'm going to ask that question through the Chair to the Town Manager or to the CFO to find out where we are with that.
Certainly, Mr. Kasonovich.
Through the Chair and Mr. Holstrom, first of all, the sum that they will be asking for will be by way of an authorization to borrow. That would be $3,24,153.
$3 million?
$3,24,153. That's the total project cost for the Accelerated Repair Program for the schools that have been identified. This vote is required. It's a requirement by MSBA that would lead to the funding of the project. The monies that were amended that you refer to, Mr. Holstrom, in addition to Articles Three, Four, and Five, would provide the town share of that $3 million. The 54.16%, or about roughly, I think it was about 1.7 million, would come from MSBA as eligible costs under this authorization. We wouldn't be spending, quite honestly, this is just a formality, this authorization, it will sit out there because the town already has identified its share of funds through amended Articles. So at some point in time, when the project is completed, we're going to have to come back and rescind the entire $3,24,000. It has to be in place in the event the town, for some reason, could not come up with its share, or for whatever reason, the state couldn't support their committed share of 54% and change. This authorization is required just as if the authorization for the middle school is required, whereas we had to authorize the full cost of the project at 44.5 million, even though the town share is about 23 million of that. So a full authorization is a requirement under the law.
Mr. Simonian.
What are, what are the available funds that this is talking, speaking to? Where is that coming from?
It, it's not. It's asking for an appropriation either through available funds or through a borrowing. It's standard language that is required by a bond counsel. This article has been reviewed and prepared by MSBA, who has their own legal counsel. I can tell you the motion is going to ask for a borrowing, an authorization to borrow up to $3.24 million. It's not coming from available funds.
Mr. Holstrom?
Um, because we, the way it's presented to us, the town vote appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, that goes to the school department. Does that go to their bottom line?
No.
It does not.
No.
From what this is, shows me right now, and through, as I understand from verbiage in some of the other Articles, when we appropriate, borrow, or transfer, and then we're sending money expended under the direction of the School Committee, it sounds like it goes to them right now for what they want to use it for, for the Bryn Mawr School and for the middle school, for the, for the elementary schools, but it sounds like they get it, and then it goes on because of the Ed Reform Act of 93, where it says it goes to the bottom line, and it doesn't tell me that it's for CIP unless you can explain to me how this works here, that it goes specifically for that project, and it can't go to the schools.
The Articles that are on this one are specific, specifically CIP Articles, and they remain in CIP because it's amending an existing CIP, which are borrowed funds. Article Six, if you look at the motion on your back page, halfway down, it says, "To meet this appropriation, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow set amounts under MGL Chapter 44." That's a borrowing MGL. I can tell you, this will not go to their bottom line. It's dedicated specifically for this accelerated program, a repair program. What I can tell you is that there is no intent to expend any portion of this authorization outside of what has already been earmarked and amended in a previous town meeting, as well as Articles Three, Four, and Five. You had mentioned 800 some odd thousand.
862, yes.
In addition to that, Articles Three, Four, and Five, I want to say the town share is approximately 1.3 million. That's what they're looking to amend, to meet our share of that project.
Can you finish? Mr. Simonian?
So we have, the other three Articles are moving $235,000 around in CIP for the middle school replacement, replacement- middle school replacement, repair. And I completely see where Mr. Holstrom's going with this. So the way I understand it, and based on your answers to his questions, it seems that this money's going to be, if it's authorized, in order to do the project, this $3 million has to be authorized, and then it's going to, I don't know, sit in an account where the School Committee is going to spend it as needed for these projects that are outlined in Article Six? Is that how it's going to work?
No.
It says, I'm just, I'm sorry to cut you off. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because the article specifically says, under the direction of the School Committee. So if Town Meeting approves it, where is this money going to be? And what, you know, what authorization is the School Committee, and I'm not calling out the School Committee in any way, shape, or form, I just want to understand how this whole process, because Town Meeting's probably going to have questions about. So if this is authorized, where is this money going to be? And what is the approval process for appropriating money out of this $3 million towards these repairs? And the last question would be, if we don't spend the entire $3 million, then what? Then what happens to it? Where does it go? You know, what's that scenario?
Mr. Kasnovich.
First of all, the town's school share of this project has already been amended. It is sitting in a capital fund, ready to be spent for the purpose that it was amended for. So these are for boiler replacements, roof replacements. It is specific. It can always be spent for that purpose. Any additional monies above and beyond that, which would dip into the $3 million, has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. You actually have to sign notes, and we have to go out and borrow money for that. There is no intention to borrow any more funds, other than what has already been amended and secured and in place at this point in time. So the School Committee has assured me through Dr. Brunel that that money is already set aside. They have met their share of the project cost, based upon the submittal that has been presented to MSBA and approved as of January fourteenth.
Is Town Meeting, I'm sorry, is Town Meeting then approving this $3 million as collateral?
It's just an authorization. A borrowing of that amount has to be in place in order for this project to get approved.
So we have the money to do the project? The $3 million is like some kind of additional guarantee, just in case?
Total project cost.
It's a total project cost, just as though Town Meeting authorized 44.5 million for an Auburn Middle School, and our share was only 23 million.
Okay. And so this $3 million is probably not going to have to be used towards anything?
That is correct.
So it's like an surety of some kind?
That is correct.
Okay. I get it.
Mr. Holstrom.
And just one quick thing through the chair. Eddie, we were presented that CIP plan by the School Committee and the School Department, saying that all the monies that were going to be transferred through the CIPs from the past annuals were going to be enough money to take care of all the repairs. That's what you're saying. So as Steve had mentioned, this is kind of an surety to, you know, if somebody defaults someplace, that we're going to have that money, we'll be able to, they'll be able to come to us to spend that money to finish out the project.
It's a vote that's required in order to go out and get this project approved. It provides bond counsel and MSBA with basically a backstop that if these funds did not become available, then we would have the ability to go out and borrow to fund it.
Mr. Holstrom.
Just as a follow-up to that, you're saying that if the state can't make their payments, then we're responsible for it? Is there any recourse to go back to the state to get that money?
I do, I don't recall an instance where the state backed away from their commitment. I think once the project is approved, it's, the cement is really dry, and it's a sure thing that we're going to get our money.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this article? The motion on the floor is to recommend approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm not opposed. I have one last question. I can't believe I just, it went right on right. Ah, sorry.
Are you in favor of the article you sent?
I'm in favor of this one.
Okay.
Oh, I know what, I'm sorry. I know we voted, but.
So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Simonian, did you have a follow-up question?
One comment you made, I just wanted to clarify through the chair. You said that even if Town Meeting authorizes this, if money from that $3 million had to be spent, they'd still have to come back to this board to sign notes to authorize that borrowing or the spending?
Just like any bond issue, you, the board, would have to sign, approve the sale and sign those notes.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Article Seven, "To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $250,675 from available funds account 013295. Auburn Middle School premium from September 2014 bond sale, and the sum of $61,791.68 from available funds account 26129001 for interest obligation for the September 2014 bond issue in the amount of $16,425,667." Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article Eight, "To see if the town meeting will vote to approve the alteration of West Street as shown on a plan entitled Plan and Profile of West Street in the Town of Auburn Worcester County and filed with the Town Clerk on March 2nd, 2015. In your packet you'll find a letter, a memorandum from Matthew Benoit on behalf of the Planning Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? We've had lots of discussion on this at previous meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. Article Nine, "To see if Town Meeting will vote to adopt the general bylaws of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, stated March 3rd, 2015, as amended by Town Meeting, if at all, which shall become effective upon approval of said bylaws pursuant to law. A copy of said bylaws have been presented to Town Meeting members concurrent with their receipt of this warrant and made public in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Thirty-two. This article shall not apply to the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws." And that is the 146-page packet that we received.
Motion to approve. Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I just wanted to mention a couple things. We did go through it in the joint meeting, but someone brought something to my attention. It's on page four, Item 2.011, regarding Town Meeting.
Could you just read it out loud, please? I have my copy with me.
The warrant for all Town Meeting meetings shall be served by posting a tested copy thereof in at least two conspicuous places in each precinct, including the Town Hall and the Public Library, and by mailing a copy of such warrant to each Town Meeting member, not less than seven days prior to such meeting. Now, in the prior iteration, I guess, although none of the drafts that I have, special Town Meeting was always 14 days. Now, on page eight, under Finance, 5035, I want to say, the language related to Finance Committee actually making a recommendation to Town Meeting or their thoughts known to the public, still has the language, seven days before an annual Town Meeting and at least 14 before any special Town Meeting. So I was just wondering if it was the intent to shorten both notifications.
Through the chair, while the chair is looking at this, the Charter also specifies the mailing requirements of Town Meeting, has seven days for an annual and 14 days for a special election. The Mass. General Law does as well. So I don't believe there's any intent to change that, because it's already established, A, by the Charter, which overrides, and B, by Mass. General Law, which would supersede if we didn't have a Charter that had the same language.
Okay.
So are there additional comments or questions? So the motion is to recommend on Article Nine is?
I just want to make one more.
Certainly, Mr. Carpenter.
We should have that cleared out, just so that you.
Yeah, through the chair, can you just point to me where that?
Page four.
Page four. So it doesn't specify special Town Meeting, because as you stated, it's in the Charter and governed by Mass. General Law.
And through the chair, when we looked back, the existing bylaws, the current bylaws, also don't mention it. So.
I did look. I'm sorry.
So it is in the Charter. It could be just be amended on the floor, since this already went through the public process and the Bylaw Review Committee actually is recommending this version. I think that amendment would have to be made tomorrow night at Town Meeting.
That's just something that is of concern to me personally, to make sure that they have ample time to review stuff. And I know we've talked about it, but it almost seems like it should be the reverse. It should be special Town Meeting, should be seven days, and annual with the budget should be 14 days, so people have a chance to absorb it, but.
And through the chair, we will look at the current bylaws. When we were just looking for it the other day, we didn't see any of the current bylaws either, but it doesn't mean an amendment couldn't be made there.
Yeah, just so that it's consistent. That's, you know, we want to make sure that it's as good as. On Section One, I think it's One, well, it's One, .03, about the Board of Selectmen taking over or taking responsibility for setting fees, I just wanted to, I'm going to support the overall, because I know that the committee worked very hard, and it's a great document. I am not in favor of the Board of Selectmen taking on that responsibility. I think we need to have more voices, not less, in government. They need to exercise their authority, the power of the purse, which is the most, you know, important authority in town government. And my concern would be that any Board of Selectmen would just change fees at any recommendation, and not that it would be necessarily, you know, with any ill intent. I just don't feel that we should be taking authority. We've already taken a great deal of authority out of the hands of voters, and I, for one, think that Town Meeting should keep control of the fee schedule. So that's, that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Is there anything else? So the motion on the floor is to recommend approval on Article Nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article Ten, "To see if the Town Meeting will vote to revoke the existing general bylaws of the Town of Auburn, condition upon approval by the Attorney General in whole or as part of the revised general bylaws of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts. This article shall not apply to the Town of Auburn zoning bylaw." So this is to, if Article Nine passes, to?
Motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article Eleven, "To see if the Town Meeting will vote to amend the Town of Auburn zoning bylaw by adding Section 9.1.3 and Section 9.1.4, to read as follows. 9.1.3, in addition to the members established by the Town Charter, the Board of Appeals may include two associate members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, one or both, of whom shall be designated from time to time by the Chairman of the Board of Appeals, to sit on the Board in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on any part of any member thereof, or in the event of a vacancy on the Board until said vacancy is filled. Section 9.1.4 reads, 'The term of each associate member shall be determined by the Board of Selectmen.' In your packet you have a memo from Matthew Benoit on behalf of the Planning Board, who voted to support and recommend to Town Meeting Article Eleven. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing not all. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. That is the action on the Town Meeting warrant for tomorrow night, so there will be no need for meeting prior to Town Meeting. We'll meet at 7:00 P.M. Under gift acceptance, we have, under Veterans Services, we have a combined gift from Jane Standring, Damian Esposito, and Elizabeth Elaine, and the amount of $25 to the Veterans' gift account. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. We have no proclamations, just a reminder that we will be meeting on the 5th, Monday, March 30th, 2015, as we have had applications for licenses that have come in and been advertised. Under Town Manager Items, Item 6A, Discussion and Potential Vote on the Formation of an Advisory Committee for the Short and Long-Term Use and Maintenance and Use of Property on South Hold Road. And I'll let the manager explain.
Through the chair, thank you. I was contacted by Mr. Kevin Maher, who is a resident in the neighborhood. He has come before the Board several times during one of the many public hearings that we had on South Hold Road, 61A issue. And Mr. Maher contacted me a couple of weeks back and asked, he wasn't sure if it would be under the Town Manager or the Board of Selectmen, but he wanted to propose that an advisory committee be put together to look at, at the time, the care, custody, and control of the future, once we close the South Hold Road property, as well as what the future use would be. I explained to Mr. Maher that, a couple of things. Under the Charter, the Town Manager can appoint a committee, but I felt that this should be brought to the attention of the Board, because the vote on the 61A land is in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. And about a week prior to this, I believe Mr. Carpenter had made a motion, and the Board had voted to reinstate the open space, not reinstate, but revitalize the Open Space Committee, and have the Open Space Committee start to look at the use of various town-owned lands. So Mr. Maher had submitted this to me, and I said if the Board, I wanted to have a public discussion about it, because this was a very public issue in the fall, if the Board felt that we should go forward and appoint a committee, I am happy to do that. I did ask Mr. Maher to make a couple of changes just with regards to the care, custody, and control of the property, because under the Charter, the Town Manager, thus Town Administration, has care, custody, and control of all town-owned property, notwithstanding school-owned property. So the care, custody, and control wouldn't be an issue, because it automatically is under the Town Manager. However, the final use of the property and what would be done would revert back to discussions that this Board has had. I did explain to Mr. Maher that a decision would have to be made sooner than later by the Board of Selectmen. We're hoping for a decision by August at the latest, because we're going out for final bonding in September. And Mr. Maher just asked me to let the Board know that he had hoped to come tonight, but he just got back from a trip, and he didn't think he could make it tonight. But he wanted to thank the Board for the consideration. I did mention to him that we had an Open Space Committee vote to encourage the Open Space Committee to take a look at these, all of the town-owned properties, and that perhaps this one could be a priority of the Open Space Committee, given the timeliness of it. And he did get back to me and said that he did have a concern with the Open Space Committee looking at this land. He felt this land should be looked at completely separate from any other parcels in town. So I wanted to share that information with you. And not necessarily that a decision needs to be made this evening, but wanted to make sure that the Board had the information from Mr. Maher, and you could see what his concept is, and that he's looking for support for the idea.
Are there any comments or questions?
And myself.
Mr. Carpenter?
I would express appreciation to Mr. Maher for taking the time to put a pretty detailed document together and sharing it with the Town. That could be a vital use to the committee. For me, I think we need to look at all the town owns. I do agree with the Manager, because of the borrowing situation, this should be a priority. But I wouldn't want to comment too much, because I think the committee, whichever committee that may be, should have an opportunity to meet and decide what their priorities are. Take this under advisement as they so choose. So my recommendation or my vote would be to forward this to whichever committee gets formed, and let them judge the document for themselves.
Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Carpenter?
That is.
Is there a second?
Second.
To forward it to the Open Space Committee? So we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
Just.
Mr. Simonian.
Just for clar-
Mr. Simonian.
Just for clarification. So through the chair, to Mr. Carpenter, you, you want to send this to the open space committee and have them decide whether another committee is necessary?
No.
Or, I'm just not sure what.
My original motion, I don't know how many meetings ago, was to have all town land looked at because we do have town lands sitting out there. We do have liability for it. We have expenses related to it, both its purchase and its upkeep. So in that, it was recommended by the manager that the open space committee be reinvigorated because it, it has kind of gone dormant. I know they didn't have a full committee. They may not, the members who worked on the plan may not wish to continue with this type of project. Maybe they do. But their, my original concept or thought was to bring in other boards, whether it be Concom Planning, zoning board, Board of Health, you know, school committee representatives from sports leagues in the business community to try and take a look at the land and see what could happen. You know, if this land is good for solar, if it's good for whatever purpose that we can potentially recoup some costs while retaining control of the property, the vast majority of the property, I would be very happy. Same thing with the Prospect Street parcel. I would like to see, we spent a considerable amount of money on that parcel for schools that we couldn't build. And that's sat on the books. The taxpayers have paid for that, even though we haven't been allowed to get a school up there. So, you know, I want people looking at these as assets. What can we use them for? Whether the sports leagues have some need because they're looking at demographics, they know that, you know, maybe athletics for six to eight-year-olds is going to be the, the going thing for three or four years. They might need those type of fields. It would be good to have a dialogue with them and see what their needs are, as well as see what commercial use, and I say commercial, I would still want the town to own it, but to see if anybody can use it and we could get rent or, or some sort of income from these properties, if it's suitable. If it's not suitable, then we would just have to continue to carry them on the books. So to me, I would follow the manager's recommendation. It seems like the open space committee put a lot of work into the plan. They are probably the best people to take that plan forward. But if they're unable or unwilling, we would need new committee, but we need a lot of voices on that committee, whether they be town voices as well as a wider community voice. So that's what I would like them to have this as a reference document to look at, see what Mr. Maher has offered, and see if it's something that they can use as a guidepost, if it's something that they feel is useful. They're going to be doing the work. So I would like them to be able to decide what, what the short-term goals, what the long-term goals, obviously in communication with the town and the various other departments. But that, that was my thought.
Mr. Cab, I'm sorry, Mr. Simonian.
I appreciate the clarification and because it reminded me of, of some of the past discussions that we've had on this. And so I, I do agree with, do agree with, with your comments. Also, what the town manager's position on this, I think it should move forward. And I think, you know, we've talked about, I think most of us did attend that open, open meeting when the plan was presented. I just, from a process point of view, I'd just like to see, since the time was put into, into creating that plan, I'd like to, some, some of the things that Mr. Maher encapsulated in his document were things that certainly were discussed over and over again during the, the entire process for the South. So I, I'd just like to see the plan, you know, some sort of discussion moving forward. And even if we, even if we start out with, with thirty ideas on different parcels of land, at least moving forward towards trying to whittle some of those down. So there, so something is being done and it's not just constantly in a state of consideration, but nothing's actually, you know, we're not coming to any resolution. So that, I'm just from that aspect. If, if those folks on the open space committee, you know, some of them have moved on, they're, they're not interested. That's fine because they did a lot of work on that plan. I just, that, that's my only, only position on that is I would like to see something moving forward. Because I know, you know, people have talked about, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks who jog have mentioned to me. And I've walked some of those spaces with Mr. Ethier, as he was talking about earlier. You know, places where people can jog without having to dodge traffic, things that, I mean, there's a million ideas. I just want to move from the, from the phase of considering all these wonderful ideas to actually saying, this would be great for this, that would be great for that. Let's try to move forward. Let's see what those costs are going to be or impacts, whatever it be. That's, that's the only thing. I just want to get out of that or at least move from that. Yeah, we're just continuing to talk about it, but not really figuring out what we're going to do. So.
Absolutely. I agree.
So I'll just state that I absolutely support Mr. Carpenter's motion to forward this document to the open space committee once they are reorganized and meeting. You know, we have the two thousand and fourteen open space and recreation plan. And, you know, in this report, whether, whether it be large or small, there's significant, actually, three pages of town-owned land. And I'm certainly not in favor of, you know, pulling out one piece of town-owned land to look at in exclusion of the rest of the land. Certainly, I understand Mr. Maher's concerns. You know, the town manager, according to the charter, will be responsible for the care, custody, and control of town-owned land. Once we own the land, which tomorrow morning, we will officially own the land, I would hope that, you know, that the size of the piece of property that it is, the town manager, through, you know, the different departments, I would think probably DPW will be monitoring this site and being aware of any maintenance required, potential illegal dumping, whatever. But again, I am not in favor of pulling out one piece of town-owned property to have it looked at separately from other pieces of town-owned land. So I will support Mr. Carpenter's motion. And I know that town manager just wanted to be heard briefly on this.
Thank you. Just through the chair, just wanted to be clear. Whatever direction the board wants me to take on this, I will be happy to do that. You know, even as far as helping to establish a priority for the open space committee, I do think while they're going to establish their priorities for land, perhaps they could establish a priority for what they look at first, just based on the time sensitivity of this with regard to the bond that's coming up. So with the support of the board, I would suggest when we do have new members and hopefully some of the existing members in the open space committee, that we let them know that while you're looking at all land in town, this one is particularly time-sensitive in that we'd like to know if there's going to be any aspects of a private use with regards to how we're going to fund the permanent financing, not the short-term bands. So if the board is okay with that, again, we, we will work toward getting some committee members. And it's a good opportunity now to just let the public know that we do have seats available on the open space committee. We constantly update our vacancies. So take a look at our website and we're going to update it tomorrow, too. We have a couple of additional vacancies we need to add in there. So that's it. Thank you. Mr. Holstrom.
I would just also support Mr. Carpenter's motion because this came up very, very quickly, I understand, because of, you know, we just took the vote, the, it's going to be settled tomorrow. And it seems as though this letter came very, very quickly that they wanted to get, somebody wanted to get the ball rolling. I wanted to find out if there was actually, if anybody had heard anything one way or another, other than the comments and suggestions that were made on the sheet, if anybody had actually come forward and spoken to the town manager's office about any use of that property.
Through the chair, to date, no one has specifically contacted me or my office to discuss any potential uses. I would make available to the open space committee some of the research and analysis that we had done early on and as well as some of the research analysis that was submitted at public hearings from some of the residents. I did get a request from a resident recently just for the name of one or two of the solar companies that we had spoken to, which I provided to that resident. But I have not heard any specific direction from anyone. I, I do think the residents of that area are waiting to see if the board is going to be moving forward through the recommendation of the open space committee.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else, there's a motion to forward this document to the open space committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. Town manager, item six B, vote to apply for, accept and expend grant funds Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Grant. The maximum award is two hundred and fifty thousand. There is no town match required. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, I have brought this to the board's attention before, but tonight is actually the night that we were looking for the vote to authorize us to put the application in, which is due at the end of the month. As we've mentioned before, we are applying for the maximum amount, which is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did receive one green community grant already. This will be the second one. We are now eligible for this one because we successfully closed out the first grant. All the documentation and paperwork for that was due December thirty-first, and that was done and in place. So we are eligible. It is a competitive grant. Any of the green communities in the state, and there are several more in the last couple of years since we've received our designation, more communities have joined in. So it is a competitive program. We are putting in for a two-part grant. We're looking to convert the town hall to gas to tie in to the gas lines that were laid in front of us on Central Street through a cooperative agreement with R. H. White's, N. Star, and the town. We're also looking to replace the boiler here in town hall. We've had several, several issues with the boiler. And looking to make upgrades to the HVAC system at the police department. All of that, the budget is being finalized this week. There is a consultant who we've been working with that does a lot of the analysis on the audits and the spending. And that consultant's been working with us since we received the first grant under that grant. And they are identifying the final budget for us to submit. This is a really complicated grant. And Eric and our planning department's working on it, as well as Matt Benoit. And we will be putting this in by the deadline. We have a lot of advice and support from the Department of Energy Resources as far as what types of projects are eligible. So we believe that these projects are eligible and they have been identified in the past as priorities. So we want to follow through with that.
Is there a motion?
Motion to apply for, accept, and expend the grant funds for Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Grant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. The next item is town manager, item six C, vote and apply for, accept and expend grant funds two thousand and fifteen partnership program grants program Blackstone Heritage Corridor. The grant award could be up to fifteen thousand dollars with a like match by the town. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, Mr. Ethier had mentioned recently, and I know we had announced to the board as well, that the Town of Auburn has been accepted through federal legislation into the Blackstone Heritage Corridor National Park and Corridor Plan. As a result of that, we are eligible for certain grants. The first grant since that eligibility came in the end of December, early January, is this partnership program grants program, which allows for grants between the amounts of five thousand and fifteen thousand dollars. We met about three weeks ago with the head of the Heritage Corridor Management Corporation and also with other members of the Heritage Corridor to see if we could coordinate a grant application with them that would benefit the Town of Auburn and would meet the criteria of this program. We're in the process of putting this grant into place. It will be submitted within the next few days. We're waiting for some additional information on it. We believe that the amount will likely be close to the fifteen thousand. Excuse me. What we are trying to look at is the potential for getting a feasibility grant study to look at laying out and hopefully ultimately constructing trails that would connect the Pappas Recreation Complex with the new parcel that we're closing on tomorrow. So whether we use all part or some of the sixty-one A land for recreation or open space, it would be nice to have some type of a walking trail that would connect the Pappas Complex with parking to the new land. So it's a very complicated process. You just can't go and start putting a trail in. So it was recommended that we apply for a feasibility grant to look at the engineering, the wetlands, and what would be involved in putting in that type of a path. Along with that, if there's enough money to apply for it, we'd also look for some signage. And if we can't get the signage in this grant, we would apply in one of the upcoming grants that we're told are, are coming about. And that signage would be to acknowledge Auburn's inclusion in the Blackstone Corridor and also to identify certain sites within Auburn that are historical sites and tied in with the Blackstone Canal. So it's great that we have this opportunity. There are, the grant's coming down the road in addition to this one. And again, this is a competitive grant and we should be done with the application within a week.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we vote to apply for, accept, and expend grant funds two thousand and fifteen partnership program grants program Blackstone Heritage Corridor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. Do you have anything else? Okay. There are no tabled items. And the Board of Selectmen member items, I did place one item, request the town administration to investigate the status of the Auburn motel. And as members are probably aware, there's been some media attention on that location recently. And I've heard from people who have some concerns. I'm not saying that there are any issues with the motel, but there are questions that, that I think need to be answered, questions that people are asking, is it a motel? Is it, are they apartments? Are people living there? Are they following the bylaws? Motels are, you know, according to our bylaw, for transient use. But, you know, there may be some designation for apartments. So I'm just asking the board to support a motion to ask the town manager just to check the status of the Auburn motel and report back to us.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your support on that. Is there any additional public comment, Mr. Page?
Good evening. Wayne Page, Ninety O. Common Road. First, I'd like to say, Ed, I wasn't going to get up here because the superintendent is going to make her own speech tomorrow night about the articles and what the money's for and why we're doing it at this time. And I just wanted to thank you for clarifying it the way you did and to let people understand what's going on for now. But Steve, the superintendent will do another presentation. She has been up to the school, the Board of Selectmen's meeting and did presentations a couple of times. And I had a question when town manager said something about signs. We had some signs from the state or somebody many, many, many years ago entering Auburn. Does anybody, Bill, do you know anything happened with them or are they going to do something with them or?
Ms. Quayle, are you prepared to answer that or report back to us?
I can report back to you. There are some very large signs at one point had been, been made. I'm not sure if they're applicable to the town still or if it's something the town would still desire to have installed. But there are some very large signs that are in storage. But I can report back to you at a later date.
So the, does the board wish to make a motion to ask the town manager for a report on the status of signs?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Anything else, Mr. Page?
I had another one, but I lost it, too. So.
It happens with age. Sorry.
I'm sorry about that, but hopefully we have a good, oh, I got it.
Okay.
I had a question. Did we always do the copying in the town clerk's office or is this something we recently started?
It's my understanding that it's been done in the town clerk's office.
It's always been like that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Plutukas?
I think that Wayne's idea is great with the signs, but I think I'd like to see the Economic Resources Committee do something with that, too. Example, it could be a gateway with Robert Gaudet, a picture of a rocket in the shape of a rocket for Auburn. We've sort of missed the boat on emphasizing the fact that the rockets were fired here. And I think if we could, it's just an idea. But as gateway signs, if it were in the shape of a rocket, it might generate some interest in the Town of Auburn. You know, I complained years ago that most of the signs coming into Auburn talked about other communities, example, the apple farm in Charlton, in different. other communities, example, the Apple Farm in Chalton, in different places. Now, some of those have been changed. In fact, I was coming up 395 at that time, which is probably four years ago now, and Auburn wasn't mentioned at all. But every other town to the west and east of us pretty much was, or businesses in those towns was mentioned, were mentioned. And I would refer to you an example from other towns. One that really has a great picture in my mind is the town of Franklin. They have, their signs advertise the town of Franklin as having the first public library. So pretty much everyone knows that that's where the first public library was. It's on their signs as you enter the town. And if we could take advantage of this, example, it could be Flagtown. Perhaps we need a flag on there. I know that we don't have the, the flag at Church Street, part of the Veterans Memorial Corridor program, was supposed to symbolize Flagtown, USA. Unfortunately, we don't fly it in the winter because we don't have the material on it. Unfortunately, that's when the people can see it off of the Mass Turnpike. And people can go by and see a flag like that flying, but just if the Economic Development Committee could take the idea of the signage as gateway signs to Auburn, and Robert Gaudet is just one idea. If you have others, fine, but I think we could really go with this. And right now, what is Auburn known for? Traffic accidents. I mean, if you're driving, if you're driving every day, WBC, just listen to it, Chalton and Auburn are mentioned more than most towns in Massachusetts. If you don't believe me, listen to WBC during the day.
Thank you, Mr. Plutukas. I think the town manager wants to address the sign question.
Yeah, I would just mention through the chair that the Economic Development Committee and the chair is Dan Carpenter, did do an analysis and a listing of priorities for the town. And amongst the recommendations that they submitted to the board and to myself in August of 2013, I believe, was recommendations for signage and wayfinding, particularly in the Drury Square area, as well as in the vicinity of the highways, although that is controlled by Mass Highway. As a result of that, and actually prior to that, we have actually applied for three, if not four, grants to the state for funding for the development and installation of signage. We have not received any of those grants. We've, will continue to try. That's why we're now looking at potentially the Blackstone as an opportunity for do, for doing that. But the Economic Development Committee, I do want to give them credit. They did identify that as a very, one of the priorities that they wanted to have. And it is in the recommendations and we've been looking for grant funding for it as opposed to coming up with tax dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comments? Mr. Simoneon?
So I just, I just want to say one thing really quick in, so that it's completely understood regarding what Mr. Page just said. My opposition to those three articles is not, is not any opposition to the project. What I'm opposed to is the way the article's written, the fact that it doesn't reference what the money is being diverted from, because it's always been that way. And I can tell you, going back seven years, when I was a town meeting member, somebody from town meeting always brings up the fact when we, when we've moved CIP money around, asking, you know, what are we going to do about this project that the money's being diverted from? It's always come up. And I just think for the sake of the fact that town meeting members have always asked about it, just to keep the information in there so they understand is not that big of a thing. And the last thing, I think at our last meeting, we forgot, we, during public comment, we recognized the efforts of our students, both the We the People and the fact that the cheerleading team had made the state final. But I think we forgot to mention the Special Olympics, another successful Special Olympics event here in Auburn, which I think we were all at, if I remember right. And, you know, once again, heard it again from a lot of the people who came and participated what a great venue Auburn has for doing it. They're so thankful that, you know, we hosted. So I didn't want to let that slip by we did last meeting, but that wasn't an intentional slight. It was great. I was happy to be there again, as I'm sure everyone else was, so.
And one thing that I wanted to mention is the Julia Bancroft Robotics Team, who will be representing the Commonwealth in Kentucky and competing against 90 other teams from the United States and across the world. So we wish them the best of luck, bring home the big prize. And, you know, I know that in the past, you can't invite everyone in, but when people have gone to the Nationals to represent the Commonwealth, be it the We the People team and now the robotics, we, the Board of Selectmen has invited them at a future date. So that's something that we may want to put on the agenda and discuss to invite, you know, those that make it to the Nationals, to invite them in to be recognized. So is there anything else on that? We have the minutes of October 21st, 2014. If there are no omissions or corrections, the chair will accept them as written. If there's no other business before the board, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you and good night.